Evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 7, 2023 meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. First up on the agenda this evening is executive session. As chair pursuant to General laws, Chapter 38, I'm making a preliminary determination of the need for executive session pursuant to General laws, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, purposes to meet with Town Council relating to appeal of number 117-16 Falmouth Hospitality LLC, 0 and 556 Main Street, and number 034 and 6 Lantern Lane, Falmouth. Could I have a motion to go into executive session for that purpose?
So moved.
Which will come back into open meeting at the conclusion of the executive session?
So moved.
Mr. Fineran, second.
Second.
Mr. Duffy, roll call vote.
Patemisak.
Duffy, aye.
Fineran, aye.
Morse, aye.
Murphy, aye.
Petrucci, aye.
We are in executive session.
Bryan, aye.
Purpose with the intention to come out of executive session and go back into open session afterwards.
Second.
If that's Mr. Fineran.
I'll second it again.
Mr. Duffy will second. Roll call vote, please.
Thomas, aye.
Duffy, aye.
Fineran, aye.
Morse, aye.
Murphy, aye.
Petrucci, aye.
We are now in executive session. Welcome to the September 7, 2023 meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. We started this evening at 6:00 PM with an executive session opening then. I had been asked by the folks at FCTV to make an announcement. Due to Comcast's channel lineup changes beginning on September 21, FCTV Government Channel 15 is moving to Channel 9. For additional viewing options, please go to www.fctv.org. Next up on the agenda this evening is public comment. This public comment is reserved for anything that is not specifically on tonight's agenda. Does any member of the public wish to make a public comment for anything that is not specifically on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. We'll move on to continuations. First up, first up on our continuations is 04223 Rapucci Breones, 24 Prospect Street, Falmouth, requesting a modification of special permit 04296 to utilize the premises as a single-family dwelling and to allow additional habitable space on the second floor of the detached garage. Voting on this is myself, Scott Peterson, Stan Murphy, Mark Fineran, and Tony, sorry, Petrucci. And for the purpose of record, since Scott is not here this evening, we're all, was Jerry here? Can I point him?
It's Jerry.
Point Jerry this evening.
Wait a minute, am I on it? 423, I'm not listed.
You weren't, but you were here.
Oh, okay.
I'll point you tonight to a vote on the matter.
All right.
Do we have any additions to the file since last meeting?
Just the new plans.
Okay. Where the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Kevin Clower, and I am here representing Paul Rapucci and Sarah Breones for 24 Prospect Street. This has been before you on two previous occasions, but we're seeking to modify special permit number 4296. Since our last application, we've made some modifications to the plan that we hope will address the concerns of the board and the concerns of the abutter. The plans have been revised in order to remove the entirety of the existing 21-foot deck from the back of the structure. The slider's been removed. This increases the setback, improves the non-conforming setback from 4.2 to 9.2 feet. Given the, given the architecture here, there was just no way we could move the door over in a sufficient manner that would satisfy what the board was looking for, so we opted to eliminate the door, the slider in that area, and the door in that area entirely. They've added a new small side dormer, which will have a 36-inch door and a minimal platform, and we did maintain the privacy screening. The entrance is now to the side in order to protect the privacy of the abutter. The bathroom has been eliminated from the garage, from the finished space above the garage. There's two small awning windows which are up high on the building there, again, just to provide airflow and some sunlight, but also to provide privacy for the abutter. These changes have the additional benefit of not just improving the setback, but also the lot coverage by structure gets reduced slightly down to 291, as well as lot coverage by structures paving and parking comes down. This whole application is really a reduction in use. There's, there's no concerns in the Health Department. It is in line with the neighborhood. It is supported by the majority of the neighbors. There's 10 letters of support in your file, and we believe that these proposed plans address the concerns of both the board and the abutter. Would be happy to address any questions that you have at this time, but otherwise I would ask that we move this matter forward.
Forward questions. Start with you, Tony.
I'm very happy with the plans. I think you've done what we've asked you to do, so I think it looks good from my perspective.
Suzanne?
Thank you. I think it's great. I appreciate what you've, you've done, all you can do, and I appreciate it.
Mark?
Thank you.
I echo that, and, you know, because it was under 10 feet, and I mean, we're getting more and more of these, I think it's, it's important to respect the rights of the abutter. And there was some confusion here as to exactly, and I guess it's nine foot eight, but the, and I went over again, a third time, and I did find the lot corner on the left side. I did not find one on the right, but the confusion was is because the fence on the property, on Mr. Davis's property, is actually about 10 and a half feet from his property line. So it was kind of confusing trying to go up the bag and figure out what was what, but this, this is, is perfect, and I hope the windows up high totally respect the abutters' rights, and I think anytime we, because I am not adverse to any of this habitable space. I'm not adverse to accessory apartments. I think any, any, any use of, you know, good property around here is a good use. So just thank you and keep those high windows in mind. I think it'll, in the future, make things sail right through here. Thanks for listening to us.
Frank?
I have no further comments.
Jerry?
No further comments.
I don't have any comments. Public comment. Sir, just come up to the microphone.
Good evening, folks. My name is Todd Davis, little abutter, 55 County House Way to the Rapucci Project. And I'm here to, I'm here tonight to basically ask the board for clarification regarding usage in the last meeting. The board said that there was no plumbing, no apartment. We are opposed to any plan that allows a business to be conducted of the garage due to past problems that we've had there, and also the designation of a bedroom or any other usage other than the applicant's expressed use as an exercise room. I have a question about why the privacy screen cannot return to the stairs. We have a predominant west wind in Falmouth, so that would actually increase the volume of air coming in. You have an east-west orientation with that building, so that couldn't be a concern. We would like to see that brought forward. Also, in the latest revision, there's no dimensions on the windows on the gable facing the 55 County House Way property. Assuming that this drawing is the scale, the bottom of the windows are even with the top of the six-foot privacy screen. So are we to assume that the interior window height off the floor is somewhere around six I actually like the look. It looks, I was, I must say, I was kind of opposed to the, to the thought of putting windows there, but I think it looks, it looks good. I think that looks good. I just want, I just want to know how high off the deck is it? Also, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just concerned about its intended use. I only bring this up because when we first discussed addressing our concerns, we put forward the thought of an internal staircase, which would be addressed, which would have addressed all the concerns. That was rejected because of the loss of square footage for that space. The applicant, in this latest revision, shows a closet in there. So to me, that's, that's cutting down on the space that they said that, you know, that conflicts with the fact that they were trying to retain all that space, that square footage for their exercise, exercise room. The applicant's reluctance to move the deck to the front gable or the northwest corner clearly shows a segregating building from their backyard. Frankly, I'm not confident that the applicant's expressed usage intent is entirely genuine. We would like to see the privacy screen extended along this side to the stairs to address the light that's going to be at the entrance. I also have a question of, this, this is basically Chairman Moss, it has to do with the privacy screen. I didn't think I'd be the privacy police, but who's the authority holding jurisdiction with regard to a ZBA decision? Is it, is it you, or is it the Building Department?
Building Inspector, sir.
Thank you. We just want to make sure that, you know, over time, things happen, you get storms, you know, that's all. I really appreciate the board's indulgence affording me this time and listening to our concerns over this rather protracted process. We look forward to moving forward. Just would like to get the clarification on the usage if I could, sir.
Other public comments, and then there may be some follow-up questions for the applicant. Ma'am, please come up.
Margaret Davis, 55 County House Way. I'm so happy to see the deck gone, you know, and I appreciate the efforts, but it's, the plan is still not ideal to me because I think a garage should be a garage. I don't want to see this space turned into an apartment, an Airbnb, or any type of dwelling. I don't even think it should be designated as a bedroom because that's not what they want. They want an exercise room, which also worries me because we haven't discussed if it's for personal use or for possibly teaching classes. We don't need more traffic there. So I think by giving, developing the second floor and by giving the space a bedroom designation and only opens the door for future problems. In the new plans, the bathroom has been removed by name, but there is a large closet in the same location, appearing to be the same size, that could easily be converted to a bathroom. The previous plans had no closet, so why add one now? An exercise room is usually opened with all equipment out and readily available to be used. I really have a nagging feeling that the stated intent is not congruent with the actual intent. Once the building inspector signs off, no one is going to know what has happened inside that building. The new plans also show added windows to the rear facing our property. In the picture, they look great, but there are no measurements. I would hope that they remain small and up high as shown in the rendition, and I would just like this to be clarified. And regarding the privacy screen, I think it should also be on the side of the landing because when I first opened my eyes this morning, the first thing I saw was the proposed location for the new door, and more specifically, the outside light. It is in a direct line from my pillow to this proposed light. Normally, I would not have thought about a light problem, but one of the board members mentioned it at a previous meeting, and it's been on my mind. And it was reinforced on Tuesday night when the Rapuccis left their back door light on all night and our upstairs was lit up like the Fourth of July. So if the privacy screening could go down further, I think that would be all the better. The board previously stated you wanted there to be no plumbing and no use as an apartment, so I hope these will be listed as stipulations in any decision you make, along with, if possible, restricting the use to daytime hours to prevent any potential issues. I want to thank the board for their service and for listening to all of our concerns during this process. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Follow-up questions from the board?
Size of the windows, I guess.
Mr. Clower? Mark?
Certainly understand the concerns of the Davises, and I think we've done a lot to address them. I think some of what they're asking for is, quite frankly, an overreach, but, you know, we are, we are making, taking the position that this is not to be an accessory apartment. We're not asking for it to be an accessory apartment. We're not asking it for it to be at-home business, so, you know, there's a lot of speculative damages here which just simply aren't what's intended. We don't typically dimension window location. I mean, it's going to be high, whether it's exactly six feet or not, I don't, I don't know. I would defer to the builder and the architect on that. Again, it's just, it's not an at-home business. We think that the changes we've made are very responsive to their concerns, and I don't think we're inclined to do much beyond this unless the board feels strongly that we have to.
There's only a sink downstairs. And the, so there's, there's no, there's no plumbing, there's no sewage there, so there's, there's no chance that there's going to be a bathroom until somebody trenches out to the septic tank. So I don't think that that's, you know, really a concern. I can understand the light, but I mean, you have done a lot, and like I said, I was not only thinking this, I was thinking of ones in the future and respecting abutters' rights. The light on the side of the door could shine down or whatever that, I'm sorry, what kind of light where it wouldn't shine into their property and still, yeah, downward lighting is, is, it's going to do exactly what it's meant to do, shine down the stairs, keep it safe.
Do you have any objection with condition of dark sky compliant exterior lighting?
Of course not.
Thank you.
I don't know. You've done a lot. I mean, they did request to bring the privacy screening around the side. I mean, it's not that much, but you have done quite a lot.
Your question?
I'm comfortable with it. I think it's approvable with conditions.
Frank?
No, no further comment. Mr. Chairman, may I?
Certainly.
As it regards the window concern, the height in the back, these are scaled plans, and I would expect that they are measurable plans and that they can be measured, and those windows will be where they're shown, they're scaled, dimensioned plans. So anybody can pick up these plans, and I would expect that the applicant would make sure those windows are where they are on the plan.
And the decision will, of course, you know, if the board sees fit to approve it, the decision will, of course, be per plan, which they can, you know, which is something they'll have to address in the building permit process, and they'll need to make sure that the plans that are submitted for the building permit are the ones that match the ones on file with the zoning board.
Just for clarifications, I want right in one ear out the other, no existing plumbing service out to the garage. Correct. Thank you. Any other follow-up questions? Do any board discussion? Jerry, we'll start with you.
None at this time.
Frank, you said no further comments. Mark?
I think we've hit it all.
Suzanne?
I was going to make a motion.
Tony?
All set.
Okay. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close, seconded by Mr. Fineran. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Hearing is closed. No further testimony will be taken. Had discussion. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve with conditions? Second of Mr., with conditions, second of Mr. Fineran. Findings?
Findings, it's in an RC zone. It was one previous appeal in '96. That's what changed two units. The lot size is 4897. It's on a public road. The existing structure and percentages are the same. I had 10 letters in support, one in opposition. We did have a second line required from the, well, we can just do it under Engineering and Water Department, each a second line. That's on under findings, and I think that's all they have for findings.
Reference in the findings, opposition at both hearings by the immediate abutters, spoken opposition referencing concerns about the existing deck, windows, noise, light. Just reference, based on their testimony, what the concerns were. I think it's important to put on the record. Plans were resubmitted, eliminating the back deck, repositioning the stairwell, slight increase in the side, and repositioning of windows to address abutter concerns.
Screening.
And privacy screening. Any other findings? Conditions?
You did the lighting?
Per plans, hours of work, exterior lighting to be dark, dark sky compliant, no plumbing, not to be used for...
Would that apply to their back door as well? That's where they, the downward?
It's not subject to the appeal.
It's not sub, yeah.
I got the whole thing was...
No plumbing to the garage, we'll make that clear. Thank you. Not to be used for bedroom or Airbnb purposes, single-family.
Or business.
They need, if they want to come back for, if it's home occupation, they need to come back for a special permit for that, so not for commercial enterprise. Other findings or conditions, excuse me.
All the structures, the room.
If there's an issue with the windows, do we want to give the zoning administrator power to just administratively approve or disapprove of placement plans?
Okay with me. Place is enough, isn't it?
I think that's a good idea, yeah.
We will check the plans before we sign them.
Okay. Any other conditions? Motion to approve, we have findings, conditions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. That's a vote.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time on the past few hearings on this, and we think it's a better project now than it was when it started.
Thanks.
Next up on continuations, we have 05323 Stinnett, trustee of Five Harbor Hill Road, Woods Hole, requesting a special permit to construct in addition exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures. Is there going to be, is this a request for another continuance?
So I have to fall on my sword here because I submitted these plans this morning. There's not a significant change from the original plans. It's an increase of about 64 square feet in the building. Understanding the board, you know, hasn't had a chance to review them, I would very much like to proceed tonight, but if the board would like a continuance for a chance to review them, I would, of course, request one. Is, like I said, the, the only change is an increase in the proposed addition of 64 square feet, so...
What is the feeling of the board with plans submitted less than a week in advance?
I think for 64 square feet, we could continue, go on, continue this meeting.
This meeting?
I agree because we have, we're pretty busy, so I think we should try and tackle it.
Mr. Fineran?
The only thing is, I could not read, you know, yeah, whatever. I mean, what the hell is? I left it at home. Stupid me.
There was only one distance that I couldn't, no, I left it on my dining room table. Good for me.
Any ones who would like to try to resolve this tonight?
Yeah, I mean, somebody with eyes can just, but I need the, I need the plan to look at it. Can I copy yours?
Of course. Frank, how do you feel?
I think we can accommodate this, this hearing tonight. The change is not so substantial that it's really going to change much.
Okay.
Jerry?
Correct.
Okay.
No, it's 13. I thought it was seven. No, I have no problem with continuing this at all.
We have to, we have to read, yep, I'll point Tony for this one, and we'll need to, we have an open, so we'll need to read everything on the record.
We need to open, 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 open.
We will proceed then.
All right, let's see what we have here. We have David Stinnett, trustee, 101 Plaza East Boulevard, Suite 300 Evansville, Indiana, applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240 11.3a Form (parentheses) of the Code of Falmouth to construct in addition exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures on subject property known as Five Harbor Hill Road, Woods Hole, Mass. And let's see, let's go through the town boards. We have planning, no comment. Assessors, no comment. Water, I think. Water has no comment. Concom, no comment. Fire Department, no comment. Health Department, as long as there's no increase in bedroom count, they're good. And Engineering, we have, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Harbor Hill Road is a public right-of-way in this area. Sydney Street is a private right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters', or public rights away. Four, there are drywells proposed for the new roof area as we typically recommend. And five, it appears that cobbles, stairs, and stone walls are located within the public right-of-way. Permanent installation of objects not owned by the town located in the municipal right-of-way was typi, would typically require a license from the Select Board. We defer to the Zoning Board of Appeals that this matter needs to be addressed prior to any approval, to any approval or as a condition in any approval. That was Engineering. And that's what I have. And I had a letter in favor. And I had a letter in favor from a neighbor on, what was that road?
Sydney.
Sydney, yes. And that's what was it, two letters? I think it's only one, right? Two, sorry. Two letters. Both in favor. And that's what I have.
Kevin Clower, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Uh, for the record, Kevin Clower, I'm an attorney with Ahmed Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth and I am before you represented, uh, David Stinnett, the owner of Five Harbor Hill Road. Who's seeking permission to create, uh, an addition which will result in lot coverage by structure in excess of twenty percent. Five Harbor Hill Road is located at the corner, at the con, convergence of Harbor Hill, uh, Woods Hole Road and Sydney Street, basically at the beginning of Woods Hole proper. The lot is, uh, just over eleven thousand square feet. It's in the RC zoning district and it's not in a flood zone. Presently, there's a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a footprint of, uh, just over two thousand square feet. It's eighteen point three percent lot coverage by structure. It is entirely conforming as to lot coverage requirements and setbacks. The owners are seeking to improve the dwelling, uh, and add additional habitable space. Realizing that a special permit was needed anyways, uh, prior to our last hearing, they, they actually wanted to make some changes. They figured if they had to go for a special permit, they might as well make it exactly what they wanted it to be. So we've amended the plans. The addition is expanded by sixty-four square feet. Uh, this proposal is, is a modest addition, I think. It's on the northwest side of the dwelling. It's a total of three hundred and thirty-six square feet. And what it does is it repurposes some of the existing, uh, space and creates a first floor master. The proposal has a ridge height which is below the existing ridge height of twenty-two feet four inches. The proposed addition ridge height is about twenty-one feet four inches. The lot coverage by structure will be twenty-one point three percent, which is two thousand three hundred and ninety square feet. And it otherwise complies with front yard, side yard and rear yard setbacks. The lot coverage by structure paving and parking will also be twenty-seven point seven percent, which is well below the forty percent that's allowed. Uh, the number of bedrooms will remain the same at four. This does require a special permit under two forty eleven point three A four, which states that, uh, for lot coverage exceeding twenty percent, uh, lot coverage by structure exceeding twenty percent in a residential, uh, C zoning district. The board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood. The effects of shadow on adjacent properties, impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. Uh, this has no significant change to the size and height. It is, uh, and remains among some of the larger homes in the neighborhood, but it's by no means an outlier. We believe the applicant found to find balance here in designing a property that fits the neighborhood, uh, while also achieving what they're hoping to accomplish. There's no impacts and views and vistas from public ways. Should not be any effect of shadow as it is below the existing ridge and it is in character with many nearby homes. There's no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments, same number of bedrooms as at present. The applicant's proposal is, I think, relatively modest in scope. There's no adverse effects here and certainly none that overbalance the benefits. It's in character with the neighborhood in both size and scope and, uh, meets the requirements of eleven point three A four and two forty twelve point one E one. I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Start with you, Jerry. No question. Frank?
I just want to clarify something, uh, Mr. Clower.
Of course.
On the, um, Harbor Hill Road, it looks like there's quite a bit of development within the right of way there.
I would agree.
And you're going to apply for a license?
We most certainly are.
Okay. Otherwise, I think this is a reasonable project.
Mark?
Uh, same as Frank said, it's, uh, but it's funny the way some of these things are laid out around town. That stake did bring it up in there, but they apply for a license. Very nice.
Having grown up in Woods Hole, it's a very nice house and I agree, uh, I think we can condition the encroachments accordingly. Suzanne?
My only concern is when the construction trucks come. It's hard enough for us to all even go there. That part's gonna be a tough one.
Yeah, I think we'll have to have the regular condition about them coordinating with the police department. If necessary, they can, um, you know. I understand the concerns about Harbor Hill, but they can utilize Sydney Street, the parking off of Sydney Street. I think there's a lot that can be done to maintain the parking on site and that's just something we'll have to address.
Is Sydney, Sydney's a public, correct, or Sydney's private?
Private street.
Private.
There's three parking spaces on Sydney. I don't see how it's really gonna be a large issue.
Are you allowed to have construction on a private road like that?
We can't. Yeah, as long as we don't impede, as long as we don't impede someone else's access.
But there's three spaces there.
I think one of the abutter letters was concerned about.
Of access.
But that's certainly, you know, I mean, that's just the reality of it and we'll have to deal with it.
Wasn't there a letter suggesting that the owner did some improvements to Sydney Street?
Uh, the, to the corner, at the Woods Hole Road and Sydney and, uh, and Harbor Hill.
That was a site of a lot of significant erosion, as I recall.
Yeah, well, I think, I think they've done a lot of landscaping and maintenance and, and not letting it get overgrown for sightlines.
There's no, there's no problem with a construction equipment utilizing Sydney Street to access the, the work site.
It makes more sense to them to be on Sydney Street than anywhere else, given the locations.
And you got the garage and the two spaces in front. I don't.
This is doable.
Be in the short term.
Tony?
I echo Suzanne's concerns. I could barely park. When I went up there, I did park in that gravel parking area, but barely. So I think that has to be very carefully watched during construction. But, uh, congratulations, an absolutely beautiful design, absolutely beautiful design. You don't get to see that of a fireplace and chimney very often.
That outdoor fireplace, I, I've had the discussion. This guy's gonna invite me over.
Take pictures for us, Kevin.
Public comment? Seeing none. Do we need board discussion? No one nodding at my hand. Uh, how would the board like to proceed? Give that to Mark. Second to Suzanne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Hearing is closed. No further testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve with conditions. Second of Mr. Finneran. All those in, uh, findings?
Findings, um, it's in an RC district. The lot size is eleven, two hundred and fourteen, so it's on a public road. Existing, ooh, I may need to correct this and add the sixty-four feet in. Existing is eighteen point three and thirty even for everything. Proposed is twenty point seven.
Twenty-one point three.
And I'm not gonna be able to.
It's twenty-one point three.
We can revise the, in the findings, based on revised plans on the screen.
Yeah.
Oh, he's got it. Thank you.
I got you.
Thank you, Kevin. I just realized the sixty-four and I, I'm not, math isn't my strongest. Um, what other findings do I have? It's a two forty eleven three A four in parentheses. Um, I think that's all I have. Yeah. For findings.
No increase of bedroom count. Not in a flood zone. Uh, conditions?
Conditions, um, oh, there was a comp sheet. That's a finding.
Yep.
There was a comp sheet. I apologize. The license, the applicant indicated they were gonna do the license.
All encroachments to be licensed or removed.
Can we just have that as an application before building permit?
Sure.
We've typically done it.
For me. Uh, construction vehicles.
Yep. Construction, uh, yeah, construction vehicles to work with the police department to ensure that, uh, there isn't a safety issue. Per plan, per revised plans. Standard hours of work. Any, uh, comments by town boards?
We, uh, limit the construction vehicles to Sydney Street and eliminate ninety-nine percent of the potential problems.
Sure, if, uh.
I think they could park in the driveway though, just making, making sure it's clear that, that, that would still be able to be utilized.
Yeah, parking the driver on Sydney Street. Why don't we just give the, uh, zoning administrator the ability to change if they submit a park, if they need to submit a revised parking plan, cause what we're putting out there isn't gonna work.
All town departments?
Yep, they've got that comment incorporated into, uh, conditions. Any other conditions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That's a vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you, uh, hearing this tonight. I, uh, was quite mad at myself when I realized the hearing was tonight.
We were mad at you too.
I'm used to that though.
Uh, next up, we have new hearings. Uh, first up on our new hearing list is, uh, number six three dash two-three Columbo, twenty-five Clam Lane, East Falmouth. Requesting a special permit to install a plunge pool exceeding twenty percent lot coverage by structures.
All right, we have Lisa Columbo, fifty-eight Stan Hope Road, East Falmouth, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash eleven point three A four in parentheses. Code of Falmouth to install a plunge pool exceeding twenty percent lot coverage by structures on subject property known as, I always say clam man lane, clam lane. Ah. Fire department has no issues. Planning, no comment. Water department, no comment. Engineering, let's see. Application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Clam lane is a private right of way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters or public rights away. Four, where there is a small lot and the proposed work is close to abutting properties with the existing fencing. Proposed work area location and lot grades, it appears that erosion and sedimentation should not be an issue with normal construction practices. However, the contractor, contractor should be held responsible for implementing erosion and sediment controls if conditions change. We recommend the following condition be included or similar if any approval. Quotations, construction activity shall not cause erosion or sedimentation to the abutting properties for town right of way. That was engineering. Concom has no comment. Three letters, no objection.
Good evening.
Good evening. Voting?
Oh, uh, yes, uh, this one to Jerry. Thank you, Noreen. Good evening, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, board of zoning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this request for a special permit tonight. Just a little bit of background, uh, first of all, my name is Lisa Columbo. I am a, uh, full-time resident of East Falmouth and I'm building a new, uh, primary home at twenty-five Clam Lane. This project is outside of the contract that I have with the builder, which is why I'm here representing myself tonight. I, uh, this, it's a, uh, proposal to install a plunge pool at the, in the back of the home. And the, the lot, uh, the, the lot is, uh, point three eight acres approximately and the lot coverage by structures before this pool, uh, was, was drawn into the, um, into the plan was nineteen percent. The pool puts it at twenty point seven seven percent, which is, as you know, uh, point seven seven over, um, what's allowable in the town of Falmouth. The plunge pool is, uh, you may be aware, is a much smaller version of an in-ground pool. It's nine feet. This, this particular model is nine feet by sixteen feet. And holds, uh, only thirty-six hundred gallons of water. It's fifty-two inches deep, um, across the pool. Um, there's no deep end. And, uh, because of its, uh, smaller size, the pool equipment is also smaller and quieter. This is the proposed plan that was drawn by BSS Design. I've highlighted in yellow, um, the important things to, uh, recognize. The pool is in the back. It's off the back, uh, of the house by about twelve feet. And, uh, the pool equipment is drawn, uh, on the left side of the house alongside where the rest of the mechanicals for the house will be placed. Just in terms of the construction process for the pool, this, it's different than a normal in-ground pool. It's, it's not built on the property. It's a cast that is, um, that is done in the manufacturer's workshop and is delivered to the property and dropped into a hole that's excavated. So the whole project can actually be completed, start to finish, in about two to three weeks if, you know, of course, depending on contractor availability. The next, I just wanted to give you an idea of what it, this is the construction of the pool. It's a six-inch concrete cast, um, that gets dropped in, uh, by a, like a lift truck. This is just a stock photo of what the plunge pool looks like. This is a vineyard model, which is the one that I've, um, I'm looking to install. It will be installed and incorporated into a patio that is gonna be built out of patio block. And the, the backyard is, uh, will be fenced in by a six-inch vinyl fence. Just some additional considerations, um, that, uh, I wanted to mention. I did outreach to all the abutters. There are four abutters, two on Clam Lane and two on Davisville Road. I was able to review the plans, uh, either in person or by email with the Clam, Clam Lane abutters. Both of them have, um, submitted letters of support for this project. The two, uh, abutters on Davisville Road, one eighty and one eighty-six Davisville, are not owner-occupied properties. One is a rental. And the other one is, seems to be unoccupied at the moment. I sent certified letters to those, the owners of those, uh, two properties. One of them did respond, uh, and expressed support in an email. With, um, just one, uh, it's up on the screen, there's one, one concern that she had a potential flooding issue. However, she acknowledged that because of the size of the pool, it was like, unlikely that that would occur. And requested that the contractor would confirm that there would be no issues after installation. The other person, as I mentioned, didn't respond. Uh, and I appreciated the review by the engineering department and the recommendation that Ms. Murphy read a little while ago. I shared this, uh, letter with the builder who has also sent in an attestation that he would address any issues that might arise from the construction of the pool. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jerry. Start with you.
No questions.
Frank?
Uh, no questions.
Mark?
No, it's pretty simple and straightforward. I have no questions.
Suzanne?
What size is your patio?
It's approximately five hundred square feet. And the pool, I, I'd have to do the math too, the nine by sixteen.
I, when, when, when Noreen and I were looking at, we, we had like forty by thirty ballpark.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's gonna be somewhere between five and six hundred, depending on, you know, the pool and, and how much space we want to have for.
And are you planning on, on enclosing any of the, any of the equipment?
Uh, no, it's.
You've already had some. It's going over by the generator?
It is. It's going, the, the generator and the air conditioning, the air conditioning units are already there. It's just gonna go in, in line with those along that side of the house.
I just worry about loudness, cause the neighbors, right?
I did talk to the Petrellos, who are the neighbors on that side. They don't have any concerns about that and, as I mentioned earlier, the pool equipment's significantly smaller than a regular sized pool, so it's not, I mean, it's right, gonna be right outside my window, so I'm not, you know, it's.
Okay, thank you.
Tony?
I have no real concerns, other than the fencing around the property will be co-compliant, the safety fencing for the pool.
Yes.
Public comment? No comments. Does the board need any discussion on this project? I don't think so. How would we like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Jerry. Is there a second?
I got it.
That's Mr. Finneran. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Hearing is closed. No additional testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve with condition.
Motion to approve with conditions by Jerry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second to Mr. Duffy. Findings?
Off we go. Uh, it's at an RC district. The overlay is Bullens Pond. It's not in the flood zone. The lot size is sixteen, seven thirty-five. It's on a private road. Existing is nineteen thirty-four and nineteen thirty-four. And proposed is twenty point seven seven over thirty fifty-four. Three letters, no objection. Uh, it's a two forty eleven three A four in parentheses. The pool is nine by sixteen. Fifty-two inches deep. We're ball parking the patio to be, as I said, forty by thirty. She said square footage. I think that's about all I have for findings.
Would have been by right, except for the fact it's gonna be point seven seven over twenty percent as proposed. No objections at the hearing, none on the file. Any other findings? Conditions?
Conditions, all I have, Tony had was the fencing, you know.
Co-compliant.
Yeah, co-compliant fencing. Just leave it at that.
Per plan.
Per plans, standard hours of work. Uh, incorporate the.
Town boards.
Town boards and the engineering recommendations, please. Any other conditions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That's a vote. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have zero six four two-three Foley, two sixty-five Walker Street, Falmouth. Requesting a special permit to allow a third garage bay.
All right, we have Stephen F. and Donna M. Foley, thirteen Union Street in Charles Town, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash six point six B of the code of Falmouth to allow a third garage bay on the subject property as known as two sixty-five Walker Street on Falmouth, Mass.
Earl's?
Let's do the town boards. Planning has no comment. Water has no comment. Engineering. We have, the application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Walker Street and BVA cause road are public rights away in this area. The proposed alteration to both rights away will require filing a permit with the engineering division. We request that the board. We request that the board either require the applicant to attain an approved driveway permit with the engineering division prior to the closing of the hearing for the special permit, or that the board include the following condition if the special permit is approved. Quotations, the applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. The requirement of the driveway permit will be erosion and sediment controls to protect the town rights away and downstream stormwater management systems. We will oversee erosion and sediment controls across the frontage of the lot for this project under the driveway permit. Two, where there is, where this is a small lot and the proposed work is so close to the abutting properties, we recommend that erosion and sediment controls are included for this project to protect the abutting properties. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls. We recommend the following condition be included or similar in any approval. Quotation, construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Document can be found on the engineering division page of the town's website. Three, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Four, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public right of ways. Five, drive wells are proposed for the roof as we typically recommend. Six, we recommend the following condition be included. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence for affixing legible numbers required. Time limit for compliance on this. Seven, it appears that a post and rail fence, shrubs, and a flagpole is located within the public right of way. Installation of objects not owned by the town located within municipal right of way typically requires a license from the select board. We defer to the zoning board of appeals in this matter and should be addressed prior to any approval or as a condition in any approval. That was engineering. We have Concom. I mean Conservation Commission, sorry. The Conservation Commission approved the above referenced project through a negative determination. Five, department has no issues. And that's what we have. And no letters.
There's one letter. There's a letter from Attorney Kirk.
Right in front of me. Is this it right here? Yes. Shall I read it? Is it very long? I can read it. I represent Matthew and Amy Siegel, trustees, who are immediate abutters to the property which is the subject matter of the above described application for a special permit. The application speaks of permit to allow for construction of a third bay garage. The address of the Siegel property is 176 BB Acres Road. The Siegels are not formally opposed to this application, however, they do have some concerns which should be able to be alleviated or mitigated by making the relief being sought, subject to certain conditions which the town of Falmouth Engineering Department has recommended. The third bay of the proposed garage extends to within 10.5 feet of the common boundary line between Siegel and Foley properties. There is currently an existing stockade fence installed by the Siegels which runs south to north along the entirety of the common boundary line. If I understand the plan correctly, the plan shows the applicant proposes to raise the elevation of the existing grade in the southwest corner of the Foley property and install a retaining wall in close proximity to the existing Siegel stockade fence. A portion of the required side gap will be located in a very narrow area between the Siegel stockade fence and the Foley retaining wall. There may be a difference in elevation between the two properties at that location. The ability to maintain and repair both the wall and the fence will be limited to each other's, to each owner's side of the respective structures. For purpose of providing clarity, perhaps a plan slash elevation could be submitted along with the view from the street level on BB Acres Road, looking north along the common boundary line and showing the relative profiles of the fence and retaining wall and the grade level between them. In order to eliminate or reduce the risk of runoff to the Siegel property, we would request that the zoning board adopt recommendations of the engineering department, conditions two, four, and five. And he recites two, four, and five, which I just read. And then he just says, "Thank you for your thoughtful attention to this, to this issue."
Any else?
Yep, that's what we have.
Good evening.
Good evening again. Buckle up, it's just you and me for the rest of the night, guys.
Oh, Tony, I'm sorry. Yes, this one. Thank you, Noreen.
Again, Kevin Clower. I'm here representing Stephen and Donna Foley, the owners of 265 Walker Street. I had the pleasure of meeting the Foleys, where all good clients are found, at the Flying Bridge, about a year ago, prior to them purchasing this house. They are here tonight requesting a special permit for construction of a new single-family residence with a three-car garage. This property is located at 265 Walker, which is the southern end of Walker, at the corner, southern corner of BB Acres Road. It is a good-sized lot, 17,255 square feet, and it's in the residential C zoning district. The applicant intends to build a new home, would like to add a third garage bay. There's no real effect on the intended footprint, because the, whether or not the garage bay exists, this is the house they'd like to build, which is effectively by right. The proposed garage is 772 square feet, and whereas the lot is under 30,000 square feet, it requires a special permit. The proposed house meets all setbacks and lot coverage requirements. We did receive a front yard designation from Gary Street, designated Walker Street as the primary front yard for this. So a special permit is required under 2406.6B. There's no standard set forth in the bylaw for a special permit for a three-car garage, so we look to the standard of 24012.1E, formerly 216. The threshold question there is, does the proposed use have adverse effects which overbalance the beneficial effects to the neighborhood and the town? Here, the lot is more than adequate in size, doesn't change the nature of the, the nature of the proposed use. It only increases the owner's utilization, and there's no impact on traffic flow or safety. We are aware of the correspondence submitted by Attorney Kirk. He and I had a good discussion yesterday. We would be happy to include the comments from engineering as conditions to a special permit. And I also spoke to the engineer about the methodology for the construction of that. The face, the retaining wall is approximately 1.5 feet off the line. The back of the wall would be about two and a half to three feet. The wall would first be constructed and then backfilled, all which would be done from the applicant's side. It would most likely be a modular block wall, which would step back with each course of blocks, which is easily built in tight areas and shouldn't present an issue here. In addition, the runoff here is going to be substantially improved by the proposed grading and dry wells. Currently, there's no drainage or dry wells on this site, and it slopes to the abutting property, which will no longer be the case, as there's a number of dry wells proposed, and this will do much more to maintain runoff on site. However, the subject of this really is the third garage bay, and at the risk of vote for simplifying, I believe that this meets the requirements of 2406.6B and 24012.1E. I'd be happy to address any questions that the board might have.
Tony, start with you.
It's a wonderful addition to the neighborhood, it's a beautiful home. My concern was, is also that retaining wall along the fence line, it says here, top of wall will be at 12 feet, and it appears that the starting point or existing elevation is at roughly eight feet, 7.71 feet. Very close to the abutters property, as outlined by Attorney Kirk. How will you protect that fence in the abutters property? There's a very small distance between both, and putting up a wall. Did you say it's a main street wall or block?
Most likely be a modular brick wall, is what, what the engineer said.
So it's just stack on stack? So in the meantime, will you be putting siltation barriers?
There will be, you know, we're, we're happy to follow the soil, soil and erosion control guidelines set forth by the, by the engineering department. There would be enough room to do so between the proposed wall and the, and the fence.
They did not, I'm not sure, did they actually say to do that? I think they were talking about the front. Will that be in addition to what they've recommended along the driveway?
So, and so when you do the soil and condition controls and, and limit of work, it's, it's not just the front. They'd be, would be sure to take efforts to protect that fence.
That's my only concern.
Suzanne?
I did have a couple of concerns, but they're going to be addressed by the engineering and then the licensing, because there was no cornerstone on Walker and BB. And then when I tried to figure out exactly, well, I couldn't, because there was no cornerstone. Also, here, I got a, there was a number of the driveway stakes that were just stacked up in the backyard. But again, that's going to be addressed by engineering, I believe, so if anybody wants to see those, they're in the, you know, in the yard, not in the ground. But as I said, it, that'd be addressed by the conditions anyway, so I honestly don't have any concern. The only other comment I have is that Mrs. Foley, she must be an extremely wonderful woman. The man cave with golf simulator is just fantastic.
That's all I'm getting.
That's his room.
His own corner, it's, you know, it's, it's a beautiful thing.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
It is.
Did you get?
I've never seen that called out on the plan before. That was new to me.
Are you going to go golf over there too, Kevin?
We're going to see how tonight goes.
Frank, do you have anything?
No, but I note, it was noted that the flagpole encroaches into the layout of the corner. Since this is a tear down or reconstruction, it might be a good idea to relocate that on the property.
I can discuss that with the applicants, and if they don't want to relocate it, they could, of course, seek a license.
They can, but it seems like a not good opportunity to relocate, because I think, you know, licenses are really kind of extraordinary. That's my view. All right.
No comment. Jerry? Public comment? Seeing none. Do we need discussion on this? Little discussion about the issue of the flagpole?
The issue of the flagpole, I think, should we require it be moved to within the property? Or to be having a license obtained by select? Frank, as I'm concerned about that.
They can apply for a license, but it, you know, you typically.
They're vindicating the there.
Apply for a license for something that you can't move. And if this can be moved, I think this is an appropriate time to do it. That's just a thought, I'm not really going to talk about it any further.
Can I speak for him?
Of course. Can you come up to the microphone, sir? Thank you. We, we just needed to, for the purposes of FCTV viewers. Thank you.
So your fans out there in TV land can hear you.
They're all going to be jealous of you.
We were, we were surprised to see where the actual property line was, and that that wasn't on our property. And Kevin did explain that we would apply for a license, I think, to be able to keep the fence and keep the flagpole. But I didn't know that there, you, you would want it moved. If you do, it would only be three or four or five feet. I think it's okay, huh?
Oh, we can move it if, as long as we can have it, yes.
Yeah, we just want to have a flagpole.
Fine, it's a good idea to have it.
But the board, for some reason, you'd want it moved, moved if you can?
We generally try to get people's, things back onto their property line, unless it's something that's, for example, if it was a stone wall that had been there for 15, 20 years, we generally would require someone to either obtain a license from the select or the appropriate board, or to remove it back onto your property line.
Thank you for the explanation. Of course, I couldn't tell where it was, because there was no corner.
Well, there's no corner anyways, it's all rounded.
So I understand your, your client is agreeable to moving it back three feet? I think that probably addresses the issue. Any other board questions, follow-up, or discussion? How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion closed by Suzanne, second by Tony. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Hearing is closed, no additional testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Motion approved. Second by Mr. Fineran. Findings?
Findings, it's in an RC district. Flood zone AE12. The lot size is 7, 17, 255, public road. Existing is 15, I guess I don't have to do that, right? I guess I can. Existing is 15.9 over 26.5, proposed is 1995 and 34.3. Let's see. They get a negative determination from conservation? Did I already say that?
Nope.
It's a 240-6.6B. I don't have to do the height? I don't think, what's the height, Kevin? Do you know that? I couldn't find it on here.
Per plans.
Per plans, let's just do hyper. 31?
Yep, that's exactly right.
I don't think that's all I have of findings.
One letter of concern submitted by Attorney Kirk concerning erosion. Testimony from the applicant that they're agreeable to the engineering, soil erosion.
Yes.
Conditions? Per plans, yep. Soil, you can incorporate the engineering comments, please.
All, all boards, yeah.
Yeah, findings, or findings, excuse me, there is an encroachment from the flagpole. Testimony from the applicant is that they're willing to relocate it back onto their property.
One little issue regarding that, there's also a post and rail fence, shrub, and the flagpole. So I guess what I would suggest is they're going to either have to remove all those items or license, so.
That was going to be a condition.
I mean, do you want to pick that you want the flagpole definitely moved and license the rest? Or whether you want to give them the option for all?
That was going to be my suggestion. They're willing to remove the flagpole, obtain license or remove the others.
The fence is, actually makes sense where it is. But personally, I'd like to see what can be corrected, corrected. That's all.
I think that's reasonable. Board, do you?
I don't like to be anti-flagpole.
I don't either. They said they're willing to move it.
Very unpopular position.
I just want to make sure I understand. Are we requiring them to move the flagpole and fence?
Flagpole.
Flagpole only.
Other encroachments to be licensed or removed.
Yeah.
Per plan, standard hours of work. What else?
Siltation barriers.
Yep, I get the engineering comments coming in about soil and erosion. Anything else? Frank, Jerry, Mark? All those in favor, please say aye.
I was just going to ask.
They're revising their plans to include the demarcated limit of work, soil erosion and sediment control. Likely best to add the relocation for the flagpole, so that you don't have to revise it again?
Okay.
Why don't we allow the administrative approval of the relocation of the flag? Unless you want to come back for the hearing? I don't.
I'm going to be here anyway.
Anything else, Noreen?
So now, I'm advised that folks that are in flood zones such as this will need elevation certificates for FEMA, but you probably are aware of that. But they just mentioned that to us, if we wanted to include it in our conditions.
Sure, condition.
And the usual work hours.
That's, yep, we had that. Vehicles, work hours, work of the police, ready, any parking. Submit a elevation certificate per FEMA. Anything else we've omitted? Noreen?
I think we're good. Are they putting a pool?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and the pool will be either fenced or covered?
Yeah, I mean, they'll have to comply with any building code requirements.
Yeah, safety.
I just didn't know if I saw a fence on.
That's a good point.
I think we show plan, but we'd have, we have to have a fence to get a building permit. So we can submit that to the board as well when, when that's done.
Condition, pool to have applicable safety regulations standards.
Whether, whether it be retractable cover or fence or whatever.
I think that's it, I hope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's a vote.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have 06623 Gugliata, 219 Great Bay Street, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and reconstruct the existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling.
All right, here we are. We have John and Heidi Gugliata, 219 Great Bay Street, East Falmouth. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240102A of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling on subject property known as 219 Great Bay Street, Falmouth, East Falmouth. And from the town departments, let's see, planning, no comment. Water. Current service line is three-quarter inch copper with a meter pit. Service must be upgraded to a one-inch PE in the, in the meter located inside the home. And from engineering. We have, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Great Bay is on, Great Bay Street is a public right of way in this area. The proposed alterations to the public right of way will require filing a permit with the engineering division. We request that the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from the engineering division prior to the closing of the hearing for the special permit, or that the board include the following condition. Quotations, the applicant shall contain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the Engineering Division in the driveway permit." End of quote. Two, it appears that a portion of the concrete walkway and fencing not shown in the plan is located within the public right-of-way. Installation of objects not owned by the town located within the municipal right-of-way typically require a license from the Select Board. We defer to the Zoning Board of Appeals of this matter, and it should be addressed prior to any approval or as a condition in any approval. Three, dry wells are shown for the roof as we typically recommend. Four, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Five, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to the public property about as a public rights away. Six, we recommend the following condition be included. Affixing of legible numbers required, time limit for compliance. And seven, where this project falls in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, we defer to the Commission for Stormwater Management and Construction Erosion Controls. And I have a letter in favor, I think. I have a letter in favor. And that's it?
The previous decisions on this? Or is this... I'm thinking about everyone.
No, there were two previous.
Yes, there's two.
Yeah, thank you.
There's a 785 and a 94. Fifty-five, ninety-four. One in eighty-five and one in ninety-four.
Ninety-four was a denial.
What was it?
Yes. Eighty-four, five was an approval.
Right.
This is the second raise and reconstruct for this property.
Yep. Yep. Okay.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, sorry, appointing voting?
Oh, this one will be Jerry.
For the record, Kevin Flower, I am representing John and Heidi Gugliata. Mr. Gugliata is here with us this evening, the owners of 219 Great Bay Street, seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling. This property is located at the southern end of the Maravista Peninsula, between Lawrence and Hamilton Street. It's a very dense residential neighborhood. The lot is 5,840 square feet. It's in the residential C zoning district. Presently, there's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling and shed, total footprint of just over 1,700 square feet. The existing dwelling is non-conforming. Front yard setback is eleven and a half, where 25 is required. Side yard setback to the south is 9.7, where 10 is required. Side yard setbacks to the north is 9.8, where 10 is required. And the lot coverage by structures is currently 29.4, where 20 is allowed by right and 25 by special permit. As I typically note here, until 2004, it was actually 35% by right. The applicant's family has owned this property since 1965. John and Heidi have owned it since 2018. It's in need of repair, cosmetically and structurally, and they are proposing to raise and rebuild the dwelling. The proposed dwelling is in substantially the same footprint, although it does reduce clutter on the lot significantly. It eliminates the existing shed. Includes a garage, which does not currently exist. All current parking is either on the lawn or within the street layout. There is an increase in bedrooms to four, but it is on a Little Pond Sewer District, which allows for four bedrooms by right. The non-conforming side yard setback to the south will be eliminated. It's improved to 10.5 feet. The front yard and side yard to the north setbacks will remain the same. And lot coverage by structure is slightly improved, at 29.4, down to 28.6%. The lot coverage by structures, paving and parking will remain conforming as well. Due to the existing non-conformities, this requires a special permit under 240 10.2A and 240 11.3A4. Under 10.2A, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of 240 12.1E, so whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional non-conformities impairs views and vistas and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new non-conformities created. One of the existing non-conformities is eliminated, and the other ones are either improved or unchanged. The proposal does not impair the views and vistas of the public, and this does fit with the neighborhood. As to 240 11.3A4, which addresses lot coverage by structures over 20%, the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal embamments. This property is effectively located at a dead end between two dead-end streets. Dwelling, while larger than present, shouldn't have a significant effect on the views and vistas from public ways. And it is a very dense clustered neighborhood, with many homes of similar scope and design. We did submit a lot comparison worksheet. This proposed dwelling is by no means an outlier within the area. And the project was actually designed with much consideration for the neighborhood. The design is such that there's lots of breaks and jogs in the design. The deck actually pulls back from the front. The dwelling was very much designed to be in character with the neighborhood visually. There's no effect of nitrogen on coastal embamments, as I mentioned, it is on sewer. This project, as proposed, represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions for the applicants. The existing non-conformities are either improved, eliminated, or unaffected. The side yard setback to the south, again, is eliminated. Lot coverage by structures improved, and there's no new dimensional non-conformities. There's no adverse effects that overbalance the benefits that I've outlined. In short, there's nothing above the proposal that is substantially more detrimental than what exists. And this does meet the requirements, I believe, of 240 10.2A, 11.3A4, and 12.1E. For these reasons, I would ask that the board grant the special permit, and I would, of course, be happy to address any questions that you have.
Board questions. Start with you, Jerry.
The height is 34... Thirty-four feet, five and a half.
Yes, that sounds right.
Eight, two, oh, one. Okay. And that's to the bottom of the cupola?
Yes. Cupola is considered ornamental in design, and not counted as part of the building height.
No other questions?
Frank?
Mr. Flower, would you go back to the plan you have on the map a minute ago? Yeah, that one. Would you kind of just explain or point out that the front of the house to the street, there's an encroachment there, which I'd like you to explain. And I'd also like you to explain where the vehicles associated with this house are going to be parked and how they're going to be handled.
So right now, there's this existing paving area within the town layout. There is a garage that is located within the house here, so the cars will be able to pull down here onto the property and into the garage. And then they'll also be able to tandem park outside of the garage. There is a walkway right here, I believe that was your question, that ties the front door to the existing parking area.
It looks kind of narrow. If you walk out of the house and take a left-hand turn, that's kind of a narrow... What is the blue spot?
That says existing concrete walkway to be temporarily removed for regrading. Portion of walk is shown to be replaced in exact location after site regrading.
All right, so that's... All right. That's, I think, what confused me. And then up at the... A little bit farther to the north, you've got another blue area, which is a triangle. What is that?
Is this what you're talking about right here?
Yes.
I believe that's all part of the same existing concrete walkway, to be temporarily removed and to be replaced as shown.
It's actually already...
Oh, it's been...
Well, it's actually right.
Mark?
Can you go to the picture with the cupola? Again, like Moses' street. There's no dimensions on that cupola. Now, is... Is there gonna be any interior access to that? Or is that strictly ornamental?
I believe it's strictly ornamental.
Once you have interior access, it removes the ornamental effect.
Yeah, no, it is intended to be ornamental. It's not... It can't be integral to the habitable space. So it would be... It is ornamental in design.
And I... They only have the steel up on Moses', but I mean, I do have a little concern with this, especially this is the second one we've gotten that have no dimensions on it. And whatever, I make note of that, and I'm gonna be watching Moses as well.
We could likely scale... The full-size plans are to scale, so we could scale it.
I'm sorry, you know, I left my...
I get in trouble with engineers when I start scaling stuff, but...
Yeah, well, I mean, as I... It would... In the future, I'd certainly... I think we'd appreciate dimensions on those, because, I mean, it can be a fine line, and as soon as there's access to it, it ceases to become an ornamental feature, and it becomes an overreach.
Well, I mean, I would just say that bear in mind that this is not a blanket approval. We still need to go through the building permit process, and if the building department found an issue with it, we'd have to modify the plans. I had a meeting with Gary today, actually, for another application, and, you know, he agrees that when it is ornamental, that it does not count towards the building height.
Oh, yeah, I understand, and that's the bylaw. I mean, you know, margins can be pushed.
Of course, and I can...
Without dimensions on there, it, of course, you know, leads me to believe that potentially that's the case. So I mean, dimensions would be nice in the future.
That's certainly something we can add moving forward.
And what's the existing ridge height of the current structure?
Eighteen feet.
Eighteen feet. Thank you.
I was just gonna ask how it went down in structure, but it's the height. Okay. Good.
I agree with Mark. I mean, when you present a set of plans to a board like this, everything should be outlined. If that cupola is meant to be ornamental, it should state ornamental. It's open to below. So in my mind, it's just part of the use of the house for light, ventilation, or anything of that nature. I mean, I don't know what the definition of ornamental is. I haven't looked at the bylaw or that. But I think that plans, when they're presented to a board, should state what this is, so we're not asking these questions or questioning, Mark has. I think the concern is legitimate, absolutely. The other thing, too, I just want to go back to the site plans we could for a minute. Obviously, we see why subdivision control laws came into being. Very difficult area with a lot of boulders blocking roads. That cobbled area, just tell me again, what is that right there? Yes?
That, I mean, that is effectively their existing driveway.
But it's in a public right-of-way. And what's to be done with that?
So they're proposing to keep that there, but what they're proposing, which doesn't currently exist, is a parking area on the site as well as a garage. So they'll be able to accommodate their parking on the garage. Many properties have the entrance to a driveway within the public... Every property has the entrance to a driveway, including cobbled areas within the town layout. We'd, of course, have to get a license for that, and would do so.
So that's your intention, is to get a license for that? That was my only question on that. And I imagine, because this is in the 100-foot buffer and under conservation control, the siltation barriers were maintained very well.
There's been an order of conditions issued by Conservation. The limit of work is shown here on the plan, but we've gone through that process already that's been approved.
Wonderful addition to the community.
Yeah, it certainly is a hell of an improvement.
It's a... I see a lot of houses, and I think it's a really beautiful design.
Yeah.
He has some comments now.
They live around the corner.
Any other public comments? Does the board need any discussion on this proposal?
I just... One. When you were viewing with the Building Commission, do they concern themselves with the licensing of fences, driveways, and structures in the right-of-way as much as we do?
So I don't typically deal with the building permit process. That's typically handled by the builders. I go... I'll speak with Mr. Street on a number of occasions when there's questions on interpretation of the bylaw or design. So I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Fineran. I expect that if there's a condition in decision, they're concerned with making sure that condition's complied with. But I think with a typical building permit is issued, I don't think the building department requires people to go get licenses for fences and flagpoles and driveways and...
Yeah, I've been here officially a year. I'm starting to broaden my outreach and horizons.
Only a year?
Or whatever, so, you know, I'm gonna... He's spent time with the planner, and I intend to meet with him, you know, and just, yeah, bring all this together, so I can be more effective. That's all.
How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Second. Mr. Fineran, second, and Mrs. Barfy. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing is closed. No additional testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed on this proposal?
Motion approved.
Motion approved. Suzanne, sir, second?
Second that.
Second of Mr. Fineran. Findings?
Till I see a head in the cupola, and then I'm gonna disapprove.
Findings?
Findings, it's in an RC district. The overlay is Great Pond. It's flood zone AE12. There was two previous appeals, as we discussed before, eighty-five and ninety-four. One approval, one denial. Lot size is 5,840. It's on a public road. Existing now is 29.4. With everything is 34.9. And proposed is 28.6, and with everything is 32.4. We have a 34.5 up to the cupola height. It's on sewer. They have Concom approval and one letter in support. That's what I have. It's a 240 10-2A.
One additional thought here. We did not have a referral from the wastewater super, and there were, I think, two rooms that the wastewater super may have some questions about because of the window in the room, the size of the room, and I think there were pocket doors proposed. So just note to you that when that is reviewed, there may be some...
Yeah, and to the extent there's any change...
Hold on a second. Let's reopen the hearing if we're taking additional testimony.
Motion to reopen.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you.
To the extent that comes up, we would, of course, come back to the board for either a modification of the special permit or an administrative review to modify it to comply with wastewater requirements.
Or just call it a man cave with a golf simulator.
It's a golf simulator.
Yeah, I mean, it's very clear. My wife would kill me.
No, it's just, you know, we have had issues raised about rooms that meet the definition of a bedroom as far as subject goes or wastewater goes, and that while you can be using the room for an office or storage or whatever, if it meets the criteria generally for a bedroom, they may look at the bedroom count differently, even though it's not being used as a bedroom, so...
That's the board health, not wastewater.
Well, no, so here, where they're on sewer, it goes through the wastewater super and not board health.
Oh, thank you.
So that's the weird...
It used to be your job.
Yeah, I did it very well, thanks to Amy.
That's why we're not getting a response.
Board satisfied at this point? Motion to close. I'll second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are reclosed. Continuing on, any additional findings?
I think I got them all.
Jerry, Frank, Mark. Conditions? Per plans, hours of work. Do we want a height cert? I think it's only because we're close to the limit.
What do you want?
A height cert. Got framing.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? Are you talking about an as-built?
No.
So, we typically do both. We usually request a height certed framing so that they're able to confirm before they finish the structural...
We get too far along with the project.
That's a good idea.
And then when the project is done, they will verify that as well.
Thank you.
With the cupola.
I did forget the comp sheet in the findings.
Look at that.
Sorry.
ConCom's order of conditions as to soil erosion or anything else. Any additional town referrals from water engineering?
Do you want to put the wastewater in there, that condition? Didn't give her a thought.
And how would you suggest we were? This is a condition, just to ensure. Testimony's four bedrooms. It's on the sewer. They have four bedrooms as a matter of right.
So, I think it would just be based on if there's any comments from wastewater regarding the bedroom count, maybe have to case an opening or make some type of minor modification, which...
Is the board comfortable allowing administrative approval or discretion to refer back to the board?
Definitely.
There we go. Regarding bedroom count.
They're limited to four per the sewer system.
Additional conditions?
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, it's something we're going to discuss at the, I think, about administrative approvals and letting Noreen deal with some of the minutia. Any additional conditions?
This is also a real tight area for, as we all saw what it was like trying to get there this week, it was pretty jammed.
Work with the police to ensure that emergency vehicles are not obstructed coming up with a parking plan as needed.
Busy down there.
There's only one house in this section of the street, so it's not really a through way.
Exactly. Standard condition for us, though.
Yeah.
Anything else? Noreen?
Again, with the flood zone, the AE12, they will need elevation...
License certificate.
Post the address, upgrade the water.
Yep, engineering comments. All comments are incorporated. Referrals, I should say, are...
And then they will need to license for the solar.
Yes, encroachments to be licensed or removed. Is that everything?
I think so.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed. That's a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good night. Last on our new hearings, we have 06723 Palomba, 19 Santuitt Road, North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling exceeding 20 percent lot coverage by structures.
We have Joseph and Kristen Palomba, 102 Woodsmere Court, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240 10-2A and 240 11.3A4 parentheses of the code of Falmouth to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling exceeding 20 percent lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 19 Santuitt Road, North Falmouth. From the boards, we have water department, no comment. Planning, no comment. Engineering, we have this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away, public utilities. Santuitt Road is a private right-of-way in this area. Number two, any connections or alterations to public utilities require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property above or is a public rights away. Four, we recommend the following condition be included or similar in any approval. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address of this residence or fixing the legible numbers required. There is a time limit for compliance. And number five, where this project falls under the jurisdiction of the conservation commission, we defer to the commission for stormwater management and construction erosion controls. That was engineering. Then we have ConCom's decision, order of conditions. Let's see. They were given on July 19. Scott McCann, plans show four-bedroom. The septic plan is for four-bedroom. Appears to meet Title V, so health doesn't have any issues with this problem. And I think that's all I have. Yep.
For the applicant.
Oh, excuse me.
Oh, sorry, this will be Tony.
You're doing good at that, Noreen.
For what I think will be the last item tonight, Kevin Clower. I am representing Joseph and Kristen Palomba, the owners of 19 Santuitt Road, and they're seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling on their property. This property is located just north of Old Silver and Seacrest. It is, again, a dense residential neighborhood. This lot is 10,538 square feet in the RB zone in district, and it's in AE15 flood zone. I didn't know they did AE15s. I don't see a lot of those.
Come to my place.
Presently, there's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. Footprint is 1,946 square feet. It's nonconforming as to front yard setback. It's 24.3 where 25 is required, and it's nonconforming to side yard setback to the east, currently 6.4 feet where 10 is required. It is also nonconforming to flood zone requirements. This house was built in 1962 and needs some, has deferred maintenance, shall we say. Given the location in the flood zone and the scope of the work, the applicants are seeking to raise and reconstruct, which will comply with flood zone requirements. Pursuant to building code and FEMA regulations, the proposed, all the habitable space in the proposed structure has to be at least one foot above the flood zone elevation, which is approximately four feet above grade. The proposed plans will eliminate the existing nonconformities. The front yard setback is eliminated. It's improved to 25.5 feet. The side yard setback to the east is also eliminated. It's nonconforming, it's improved to 10.5 feet. Bedroom count does increase to four. However, the applicants are installing a new Title V system, which is noted by board health and approved by ConCom already. Proposed ridge height here is 29 feet nine five-eighths inches, which is below the 35 foot allowed, and it will comply with flood zone regulations. Despite improvements all around, this does require a special permit under 240 10.2A and 11.3A4. Under 10.2A, pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed, but only by special permit, provided it's not substantially more detrimental than what exists. As you know, the board is asked to consider the standards of 240 12.1E and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities and pairs views and vistas and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. Here, there's no new nonconformity that's created, and the existing nonconformities are all eliminated. To avoid repetition, I'm going to look at the standards of 240 11.3A4 because there is some overlap. That allows for lot coverage in excess of 20 percent in residential B zone in district. Here, the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effect of shadows, impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. This, again, this dwelling, you know, we tend to find themes in these, but this dwelling is, was designed to be in character with the neighborhood, especially considering the houses that are recently built complying with flood zone, such as 19 and 2 to 12. There's no impacts on views and vistas. This is a private road. There's no effect of nitrogen, though it is increasing. There is that new Title V system, and the project represents an improvement for the applicants as well as to the conditions underground, eliminating two existing nonconformities and coming into compliance with flood zone requirements. There's no new dimensional nonconformities, no adverse effects, and there's nothing here above the proposal that is substantially more detrimental than what exists. I believe that this meets all the requirements of 240 10.2A, 240 11.3A4, and 240 12.1E. I'd be happy to address any questions the board may have. Otherwise, I would ask that you grant the special permit.
Board questions. Jerry? No questions. Frank?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mark?
I do. That's some more show and tell.
Oh, good.
These are the lot lines. They're all marked approximate, which I've never seen, and, I mean, if they're approximately six inches off, that blows your whole ten-foot, five-inch... I just don't know the meaning of approximate. And, I mean, are we supposed to give you an approximate approval, or?
I don't, I don't know why the, I don't know why the engineer chose that particular verbiage.
Well, it doesn't. I mean, it, it...
I understand the concern, but, you know, we have, we have an engineer who's taking the property in compliance with requirements. I, would, in a perfect world, would he not have put approximate on it? Yes.
Well, I've just never seen it before. I mean, they've always, you know, I mean, and they are licensed surveyors. I mean, they're supposed to be down to the inch. I mean, we don't even know what are the parameters for approximate. I mean, it's, it's kind of a... Well, you don't have the answer.
I don't have the answer.
And then it's, I mean, if it's six inches, I mean, that puts it, and, you know, makes it nonconforming.
Well, I mean, we have, we have the certified plot plan. We, I think we have to rely on the stakes that are provided by the engineers. I don't, I simply don't have the answer, Mr. Fineran.
I mean, and that's absolutely true, but the engineer wrote approximate on every one of them, and it just, it's very confusing.
These are engineers we deal with other cases, so it's kind of strange.
Can you give us an answer? Wait a minute, I guess I asked Noreen. Can, is there any way he can come back with an answer, and then we can, we'd have to vote to approve this? I'm just extremely curious. I've never seen this before. I mean, and...
Well, so, the other option that you would have is you could require a foundation cert for setbacks so that you're ensuring that they're actually putting the building where they tell you they are.
And that would get us through all this, and you'd be agreeable to that. But you can still give us an answer why this is...
I'm going to, I'm going to ask just out of my own edification.
Yeah.
Because I'm curious, but, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, that'd be fine by me, but, I mean, I'm, I, like I said, I can give you an approximate approval until they, you know, know. And, just in a year, I've never seen that.
Would you be satisfied with a foundation cert?
Yeah, absolutely. Any way to get through it, I'm sure there's, you know. I mean, we got six inches to play with here, so...
Suzanne, any questions?
This is really one of the best areas in town. And you let me truly let that out.
It's very nice.
It's the gold coast.
Yeah, it is one of the nicest beaches in this whole town.
It's a, it's a, it's a cool little neighborhood, too. It's kind of, you know, it's, it's got, it's secluded, as central as it is to everything, it's kind of secluded and it has its own...
Beautiful. Yep. It's all I have. It's a good project.
Tony?
The house certainly is in keeping with the improvements that have been made through the years. It's, it looks, it'll look wonderful there.
Very subtle in the front, but substantial.
My first time working with this architect, I was really impressed with his design.
Yeah. I agree with Mark with regard, I've never seen anything like that before. I think a foundation certification certainly solved that issue. I'm not sure what we do. These sites get very tight when you're putting these large homes on these small lots. Do we require siltation barriers in sites like this? Is that a normal?
We generally, it's either we defer to ConCom's order of conditions, or we historically have almost always incorporated engineering's comments about soil erosion and sediment control.
Except they, I don't think they've said anything.
ConCom has a huge...
ConCom has an order of conditions. So, that's going to be a...
They kind of check one another, so we don't have to...
I have no more questions.
There is an order of conditions, which, which will establish the environment work and erosion control barriers and whatnot.
No, no more questions.
Anybody else? No one in the audience, but I have to proceed to a public comment, seeing none.
I'm very pleased.
Before we close, do you have anything?
One item for the board, and I know recognizing perhaps it's a, a different designer for the project. We were looking at the height and trying to figure out how the architect had measured the height because they weren't, they weren't exactly going to the ground level and measuring to the ridge height, which is typically what we see. So, I did snag the building commissioner who was by my office. Wow, the architect had listed 29 feet. We actually came up with 32 feet and one inch because there was a section that the architect hadn't, had, they had separately designated but not added in. So, it's not a significant...
So, I actually, I looked at that myself in preparing for the hearing, and what he noted was existing grade, because the bylaw refers to the height being the existing grade of all street-facing sides of the structure. So, I think he took the existing grade, and there may be some digout that's going to take place despite it being in a flood zone, but his, his height notation there reflected the elevation 13, which is the current existing grade.
Okay.
Current average existing grade, which is what the bylaw calls for.
Would you be happy, Noreen, with the condition not to exceed 35 feet?
Well, I don't think you want to do that.
No, I think for a plan.
Then they'll take 35.
I understand that, but...
Her plans has been allowing to add three feet.
Any additional discussion? How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Suzanne, second of Tony. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed. Hearing is closed. No additional testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Suzanne.